Enjoy.
Enjoy, yes. We're good? Good evening, folks. Welcome to our June ninth Town Council meeting. And around the table this evening, we have Town Clerk Joanne Perry. We have Town Manager Sandy Collins, Councillor Jess Paul, Councillor Gerald Perry, Councillor Richard Kelly, Councillor Craig Arnold, Deputy Mayor David Saunders, and yours truly Doug Churchill, Mayor. Chantel Lynch is not with us this evening, she's at work with us. So we'll start our meeting with the minutes of the council meeting on May twenty-sixth at seven P M. We need a motion to adopt, please. Deputy Mayor and Councillor Perry, all in favor? Is everybody? I'm going to read, it's a short meeting, but I'm going to read this into the record. First item is a request for Crown Land right away. It was consensus that in response to the request from Joshua Perry, council not approved his request to acquire the Crown Land right away at Baby White's Terror View Drive. Number two, Redmond Gordon business application. It was a consensus that Mr. Gordon be advised that he must submit an application to operate if he intends to continue to scrap metal business at Main Street North. Lease of land, Mr. James Blackwood, Jr. It was a consensus that the Town Manager contact James Blackwood, Jr. to determine the cost of land lease in part or in whole. And finally, number four, vandalism at the washroom at Glovetown Rec Building. It was the consensus that the youth responsible for the vandalism at the washroom at Glovetown Rec Building be dealt with through the Alternative Measures Program and be required to do twenty hours of community service. The meeting adjourned at seven twenty-five. Do we have any questions from anybody or concerns? If not, we move to the regular council meeting on May the twenty-sixth at seven thirty.
Move for adoption.
Second, Councillor Kelly and Councillor Perry, all in favor? Is everybody? Anything arising from those minutes?
Number three, one being up there.
Number three? Okay, turn the page.
The RV dumping station on Station Road, we opened the interim. Is there anything to update us or?
Yeah, so I spoke to Public Works actually as recent as today, as late as today. And Gord is working on some of the, getting some of the pieces that we need to make it compliant with COVID-19 regulations. There's one piece we're waiting on. Once we get that, he figures if everything goes as planned, he may have it open by this Friday. Otherwise, it'll be early next week, but it's dependent on a certain part that we're waiting on, so. But everything should be, worst case scenario, should be open late next week, but we're thinking perhaps even by Friday this week, it should be done.
Do you have an idea of what kinds of work is being done there? Because there may be some questions in terms of what is necessary. Some people are saying, well, COVID is not a problem.
Right, so these were regulations that came out from municipal fairs for communities that had dumping stations. So these were directives sent out by the provincial government, saying if you have a dumping station, you must have these things on your dumping station, which we didn't have a number of those. So they're being addressed. I think, I don't have the regulations in front of me, but a hose that is on an automatic reel, a self-closing cap, a tilted grade on the foundation. There's, there was a few things that had to be done, so we can address all those. And hopefully, like I said, by Friday this week, it'll be opened and compliant, more importantly.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Nothing new from, from Mr. James, anything new from Wolf James Reed?
No, he was aware of what we were doing, opening up ours until he got his straightened out, and he understood that. Last I'd spoke to him, he was still dealing with provincial government and yeah, nothing since then.
He's still working.
He just told me last week that he's off the case. Definitely thinks for that, but I don't know, that's just.
We gotta wait and see.
I want his own person, but I mean, I'm sure that he's got a.
Any else arising from those minutes?
Got any information on the sawmills?
No, I wrote Tammy Davis, who's the Executive Director of PMA, who, so PMA is Professional Municipal Administrators. I sent an email asking from the membership what other towns are doing. So she sent it out to all the municipalities, hoping that I'd get something back. I've gotten zero back. I confirmed with her yesterday after had been anything come in, and she said nothing yet, so we may not. So we probably have to talk through this later on. I mean, it's on deferred, but I think we may have to proceed forward with some of the information that we do have. And I can, I can go out to get some more if, if you wish, but it doesn't seem to be any municipalities forthcoming with anything they have, so.
Okay, we may go it alone.
Yeah.
Anything else arising? All right, airing on then, we'll move to the Permit Committee meeting on June the first at seven thirty. Move the second minutes by Councillor Arnold and Councillor Kelly. All in favor? Is everybody? There's two recommendations there that I'll go through very quickly. We need to approve those recommendations from the Permit Committee. The first one deals with the site visit to Melanie Parsons, Riverside Road East, nine through thirteen. And the committee doesn't foresee any issues with subdividing the land into three parcels, provided that each has a minimum frontage of sixty feet and meets all development regulations. Development on the proposed lot on the most easterly side of the property would be conditional to provincial government approval as it relates to a building near a brook or a body of water. Access to that property may be accessed to the west or left of this lift station by the property owner to allow passage over the brook. Again, this would be done with permission from provincial government Water Resources. So that's the recommendation. Before we have a discussion, I guess, is that we have a motion? Councillor Arnold, second, Councillor Kelly. Any discussion? So the recommendation is to allow them to do the subdivision with the concerns with the third parcel being that there is a brook there that would be, probably be requiring a provincial approval. May or may not, actually, we don't know, we're just thinking that it may. No concerns? Ready for question? All in favor then? Is everybody? Okay, thank you. The second item is a vendor permit for out-of-town businesses. The recommendation is an annual charge of fifty dollars or a daily fee of ten. It would be the responsibility of the applicant business owner to ensure all necessary government approvals and permits are in place. Can we have a motion to accept that recommendation, please? Councillor Arnold, Deputy Mayor Saunders? Any discussion? So the recommendation again is that businesses or vendors coming into town would pay a fifty-dollar annual fee or a ten-dollar daily fee. Questions?
How would you enforce that?
Mr. Town Manager? Or do you?
Yeah, so generally, the people who set up in town, set up at the corner, whether it be the fish truck or the apple truck or whatever. So I would expect that most of these people traveling the province would probably encounter these types of requirements. So it would just have to be known to them. I was thinking maybe if we were to place a sign at the corner stating anyone settling in town would, would need to come to the town office to get that permit. Otherwise, a friendly visit from myself, perhaps, just to make them aware of it, because it is new. So something that they haven't had to do in the past, perhaps, here.
Yeah, but just come back to the useful handbook where it says that it's not advisable to make any bylaws unless you're prepared to enforce them. That's in the handbook?
Yeah.
So I don't know if, I just asked a question, what you would do to enforce it, is it just?
We, we have a lot, we have a book full of bylaws.
Yes.
That we try to enforce.
Yes.
But we don't have, we don't have anybody actually enforcing them.
This is where the problem comes up.
In this case, I think what we're hoping to be able to do is go to these vendors and say, look, we're here on a regular basis, we'd like for you to have a license. We'd like to know, for instance, that you're here and that you have a license to, to sell.
So the owners would be on the Town Manager to make that call.
Yeah, the initial call. So you have to contact, yeah.
Most of these people are year after year, so I'm guessing once they do it the first year, it would become habit, so.
I would assume you would have a vendor's permit, like a house permit to build.
What type of vendor?
In the window or attached to.
Did you assure we had that one done?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did, yeah.
And we could even go as far, this is not something we discussed before, before, so I don't know what the appetite is, but we could even have, once they are permitted there, we could even share on our Facebook that this business is operating today and they've been permitted to operate there.
That's right.
Maybe that would act as an incentive to, to pay the ten dollars, which is a pretty small fee, right?
Thank you. Any other questions? Any, any other questions? Ready for the question? All in favor then? Is everybody? Thank you. The next item is the Economic Development Recreation Committee meeting, oh, excuse me, June the eighth at one P M. We need a motion to adopt those minutes, please.
Move.
Councillor Kelly, Councillor Perry, all in favor? Is everybody? There's some information items there, and there's some that would need motions. The first one is a recommendation to council. This is in relation to the volleyball court. You remember that there was some money received from a grant, but based on the current costs of doing that particular project, the recommendation to council from our committee is to put the volleyball court on old until prices of materials go down. So that's the motion that we require, that's the recommendation of the committee. So if we can have a motion, Councillor Arnold, second, Councillor Paul. Any discussion? Again, it's because the, basically, the cost of materials has just gotten out of control and we, we feel it would be better to put it off for another while at least. Ready for the question? All in favor? Is everybody? The next item, I think, is just for information purposes. You remember, we were looking at trail lighting around Ken Diamond Park. Actually, we put out the tender call, and there were no tenders. So no tenders were received due to the cost of lighting being hired and the COVID grant received. And again, a bigger, big concern, I think, with most of the people who looked at it, most of the companies, was their ten feet of bog in a lot of areas around that small diamond loop, if you like. So the suggestion is, this money, of course, is still available to us, but we need to make a decision by, soon, because the money, of course, runs out. The opportunity to get the money runs out by December thirty-first. So there's three, three recommend, three suggestions that we look at. One is a skate park, accessible floor, accessible flooring for the playground, for wheelchairs and so on. And the other one is heat pumps for the arena dressing room. Now, we don't have costs involved with any of these, so it wouldn't be necessary just before we make a decision. Our point now is, what is your thinking? Would you like to have something else added to the list, Councillor Paul?
Yeah, no, when that money usually is designated for that thing, can we use the money for something else?
That's what we're asking these items now. These are rather opportunistic.
For recreation, would you? Some for recreation, wasn't it?
That's what was pushed, but there was other, there was other things done as well beyond that. Like there was, you know, I think in Eastport, they did the Town Hall, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me on that.
Trade Hound did too.
Yeah, so it was.
He's under Town Hall to paint them and won't paint the other end. And he built that wharf.
Yeah. Because normally, the money is for roads, is getting spent on roads and whatever.
This is a, well, again, this is all subject to their approval. I mean, we, we have to go back to them and make sure they agree with the, the new line. But with our, with our understanding too, that if you can't do what you already put in place or tried to put in place, then you have to go somewhere else, I guess. The Town Manager was trying to get in, sorry.
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, I spoke to MHA Parrot yesterday, because of course, this is all new. Our tender closed, we didn't get any bids. We had, I think, five companies from, from St. John's Corner Brook, the local companies come and look at this. And as the mayor had said, it didn't go for various reasons. However, I spoke to MHA Parrot and said, we need to change gears now. We were approved for this money, COVID stimulus money. We can't use it for the project we were approved for, can we change gears now and re-profile it? So he spoke to the minister, she agreed, if we can get a letter in ASAP, they would have to approve it again, but there is the opportunity to do so. But as the mayor also said, this has to be spent by years in, so we really got to try to get this moving.
Well, hopefully, the price of one will go down, because same thing will apply to the other one there, the volleyball court, you gotta buy materials, so.
Yeah. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this one, right?
If you're going to the minister for approval, we write a letter, is that specifics? Or just approval to, to spend our money on a, on other thing? We have to be specific, what, what we're gonna do.
Because when we were approved, all, all the municipalities that were applied, that applied for were approved, had their municipality's name and the approved project and the amount. So they want to put that there, whether it's a skate park or heaters or whatever, yeah.
So.
Is there anything, I guess, a question for you now? We're not gonna make a decision tonight, obviously, but the question now is the, of the three items that's maybe suggested there were some things that came from the committee, but is there anything else that people have in mind that you think might be worthy of consideration?
I, I think myself, we should leave it open for a little while.
Yeah, we've got, but again, with a limited time.
I know, I know, we're, we're per for time here now.
We don't, we're not gonna do it tonight.
We're not gonna do it tonight, so we need to leave it open for a little while, and if anybody got anything, they suggest us?
Well, that's a good point.
Put it on the list, and then we, then we make the choice.
Yeah, okay.
What would be a good timeframe for leaving it open?
Next council meeting, definitely have to make a decision.
I'd, I'd have to be the next two weeks.
That gonna be late, then?
I think that's too late.
Is that too late, is it?
I think that's too late.
Maybe we could have a special meeting next week to.
Yeah.
But you only need to have a special meeting if there are other ideas coming in or.
Well, no, you have to decide which one you're going.
And by that time, hopefully, we'll have prices associated with Easter, even if there's something else comes forward, let us know.
You wouldn't need prices.
Pam is working on that.
You wouldn't need prices?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you wanna make a decision?
That's right.
Make a decision that something is overpriced again, then we're back to.
Or it might be a combination of two things, right?
Yes, yes, Pam is working on getting prices, she started on that today.
Definitely for the playground, that would be more for accessibility for.
We have just.
Know that you're going for access?
It's safety.
It's safety, yeah.
It's safety, yeah. It covers, basically covers the gravel that's there now, and it makes it a, a more of a, a soft outlanding for kids as well.
It's like a rubberized, colored materials, really nice looking, and yeah.
Anyway, so we'll leave it for now. Like I said, Councillor Perry mentioned, if you have something, make sure that somebody at the office knows that you've got something else in mind.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to pick an evening for that now, and I can get it into the minutes? Because sometimes if we don't, we.
Off Wednesday, was it?
Yeah, off Wednesday.
Next Wednesday evening?
Is that too late? Again, I said two weeks, so.
What do you think?
I'm, I'm fine with it. Sooner rather later.
All right, well, let's try for next Wednesday. If somebody comes up and we feel it's gotta be earlier, we'll try and get together earlier. So we'll do it on the off Wednesday next, next Wednesday night, yeah.
But again, if I can just say, if a councillor around the table has an idea before Wednesday, it'd be great for him to get to us early, so then we can try to get prices. So we have everything ready to go Wednesday, right?
Decision will have to be made.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, and the pricing, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is a.
That's what they got in their north side, Eastport Beach down there, isn't it?
There's a, they have a runway there, yeah.
Runway, yeah.
Same sort of material thing. Okay, there's a mention there of an update on the community market. I'm gonna leave that to myself and Town Manager to fill in the details there. The first item, my guess, is that the Town Manager and the Economic Development Office and myself went to St. John's, and we met with some of the people involved with the, the community market.
St. John's Farmers Market.
The St. John's Farmers Market was one, and we, we met with one of the people from, one of the consultants as well, from, oh, we've got trouble with this one.
Gilgoi Gos?
Gos Gilroy.
Gos Gilroy, okay, I suppose.
Rick Comerford.
Rick Comerford, that's right. And we met with Paul Burke from the Frye Family Foundation. All of these meetings were extremely satisfying for us in that we kind of came away feeling that, you know, we, we had done, we were on the right track as far as all of these people were concerned. What was kind of interesting for Rick Comerford and the consultant was that he's going to come back now and do a updated, I suppose, income expense statement for a few years. So we'll kind of have some idea of what possibilities are for making money and how much it's gonna cost to run the building based on his experience and so on. So it'll be interesting to see that. The other thing, of course, is that we've had all the consultants out there now. I think everybody, every department that we have, and I think there's been three or four, four or five of them. And the other thing that's going to happen, of course, is that in July, we're going to have a meeting of, stakeholder meeting of, with the consultants, all of them, and with these stakeholders to kind of narrow down as to what exactly will go into that building and how it'll probably look. So we look forward to that sometime in, in July, so. I don't know, Town Manager, if there's anything else that you want to add today?
Uh, no, I.
For those who don't know yet, stakeholders, i.e. the.
The possible vendors, the town of Glovetown, the.
Frye Foundation, maybe?
Frye Foundation may be involved. We certainly hope that they would be. You know, anybody that we feel who's, who's kind of got a vested interest now in making this work, you know, would be involved, so. I don't know, we don't have the final list, I don't think, of who might be interested, but certainly got to do that too.
I'll just add, you mentioned, we spoke to Paul Burke of the Frye Family Foundation, and they again reiterated their support for Glovetown and the fact that they, they've been with us now with the market from the beginning, and they're looking to see it through with us. And we had talked about upcoming budgets that they have and money that they may be able to put into a market, something that perhaps wouldn't be able to be covered through a co or the province, they would be able to chip in on. So they're very willing to continue to partner with us, so that's great news as well.
Yeah, good, good to know that they're always in the background with, with a few dollars in the pocket. So it's nice to, nice to have these people around. The next item then, we can move on, is again for information, I think, this is the crosswalk at the town center. The Town Manager is going to contact the Department of Highways to identify areas for crosswalks along the town center. So we're hoping that the highways will allow us to put at least one, maybe two, from one side of the road to the other, basically, along there. Some people have been concerned, I think we've had some, people came into the Town Hall with some notes made in terms of children, in particular, crossing around the visitor center to the SO building on the other side, where they have, of course, the.
That's so many years ago.
The, you know, the pizza and the, what else did you have?
That's right.
Pizza.
And the happy stores there too.
The. The next item is going to require, I think, a, a motion. We've had a request to, to put a memorial swing at the Ken Diamond Park. And the, the recommendation of council is to go ahead with a memorial swing. So it'll be somewhat like a bench, but a little more elaborate in that it will be a true swing, I guess, a three-person swing. I think the Town Manager has a picture that he's showing around. So this will be paid in full by the, by the person putting it there, or the family. And of course, it'll be, it'll be put in a place to be determined by the town, so. I guess we need a motion, because that's a little different from where we've been going. So moved by Councillor Arnold, seconded by Councillor Kelly. Anything, any further comments or concerns? All in favor then? Is everybody? Thank you. And the summer updated program, summer program update. The summer day camp, soccer program, and visitor information center will be running this summer. The town has received numerous student applications, and successful candidates are as follows. We're not gonna name them.
I'm not sure if they've been advised yet, Mr. Perry.
I believe in that, but I can't confirm that all of that.
Well, we have a program coordinator, a recreation worker, one and two, and we have a visitor information center person and a coordinator, who have all been put in place. So I won't mention the names, I'll, we know for sure that they've been notified.
We can read them into the record at the next meeting.
We can read them next time, and Town Clerk will remind.
I, I will try to do that.
So that was just for information. And that takes, oh, no, I have one more. Public Works meeting today. Everybody is receiving a copy, this is out of the press. This was a public works committee meeting today at one P M. And the meeting was held to address a request from Ivan and Mary Collins regarding an issue with their driveway as a result of work completed by the town creating a sinkhole. And the recommendation from council was, we would replace a strip of asphalt, the width of the driveway, from the road just in past the damage area, which is eleven feet, from the information we have here. You checked it?
I did, yeah.
The numbers. So that's the recommendation. Before we have a discussion, can we have a, a motion with?
To adopt the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, to adopt the minutes first. Good, did you want to do that?
I was on the driveway, you know.
Okay, well, we need a moment.
Oh, sure, did, let us be adopted.
Councillor Perry and Councillor Arnold, that we adopt the minutes, sorry about that. Councillor Paul would move the adoption of the recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councillor Perry? Okay, now a discussion.
Yes, but eleven by what?
So if.
For the benefit of those in the room, this is the, yeah, this is the driveway here, so it's forty-five feet at its furthest point. Of course, that narrows in significantly here.
Yeah, okay.
But forty-five feet across, this is what was paved before. This is where the sinkhole, or pothole, if you will, happened, just inside, probably a foot or two outside of what we had, the work, where it was completed. So now, we're looking at going across here and paving the entire back, which is eleven feet.
Looking at the, the hole and the contours around it, it looked to most like it was a result of the excavation that was there originally, so you're, you're more or less, I think. It caved in underneath, it looks like it caved in underneath, right? So that would need to be excavated, of course, and then the whole area paved again.
And just to, because I know some of us were there today, but this is a driveway that was just put in recently as well, so it's not, it's not an old driveway, it's a relatively recent driveway. It's, its condition is in perfect shape everywhere else, except right near where that cover's made.
What causes the sinkhole, the town or?
Well, when the water lines were dug up, a portion of the pavement was replaced, but I guess the shoulder of where it was replaced, some dirt may have skirted down.
Maybe compaction, maybe. It's about, it's less than a foot, I would say, from where the new pavement was put in.
But a very good job of paving either, very, very poor, very poor job done on the pavement.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we all looked at it, and we all felt that, that this was caused by the excavation that we did there, there must have been some.
What did the contractor be helping tell them with?
It was a bad job to do that now, so I, you know, so late. And it's not, it's not his problem with the sinkhole, I don't think. You'd never be able to prove that it is, but it may very well have been, right? It wasn't compounded or whatever.
And in fairness, compaction where we repaved may have been fine, it likely was, because that remains fine, but it's what came out from under what stayed there. So in fairness to the contractor, they couldn't compact that area perhaps, like they should have? I'm not sure, but, yeah.
They couldn't get out.
The damage, the damage was started.
Right, so.
Before we, you know, we paved, but the damage was out of.
That will be done when we do our paving.
Right, that'll be including the shoes, patching.
Yeah, patching, yeah. So the motions are made, and second, any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Everybody? Thank you. We're down to deferred business. The first item is the municipal plan amendment for Clay-Cove and Sweet Apple Terrace. Anything new to report? Since the last meeting?
Just waiting on the final paperwork from the planning office.
Still waiting, okay.
No additional work required from us, we just have to wait for it.
We see the light.
We see the light.
It's getting closer.
Down the like of.
And the second item is the zone change requests from Tower Equestrian. Anything new?
Um, yeah, I have a motion, actually, it has to be adopted tonight, but I'll do that in my update.
Okay, if you like.
Yeah.
Sure, okay, we'll leave it for now. The RV dumping station spring twenty-twenty-one, I think we've exhausted that one.
Sifted that one out, I don't know, can we?
Well, let's make sure it's open first.
The grand opening. The ribbon, the ribbon on it.
The next item is a review of policies for subdivision extensions in existing roads. That's not been done, I don't think. Paul Atcher land at one forty-five, one sixty-three Main Street South. Is there anything new? We'd left it for him to come back to us.
Haven't heard back from him, anything yet, no update.
The next one is Bonnie Perry water leak repayment. You have a letter there, I think, in the Correspondence, so we'll leave it for now. Sawmill application is the next one, and we've already discussed that one, that there is not enough information really for us yet, so we may have to meet in the absence of that and come up with our own. Email from Philis Higgins to Sawmills and Gordon Scrapyard. We've kind of dealt with that in a sense, but we'll leave it, I guess, for the time being, till we see what comes of that.
It would be fair if we wanted to schedule that around Sawmill's, because there's a number of individuals waiting now for our decision. Is it possible we could schedule something for next week to?
But, oh, for Sawmill's discussion.
Yes, yeah.
Monday, Tuesday night?
Perhaps the same night, yeah.
Should've done Wednesday?
Okay.
Okay, everybody in agreement? We'll meet the next Wednesday night to do that as well, with Sawmills, as we had done before. The next one is the email from Melanie Parsons, which we've dealt with, and the letter from Ivan Collins, which we dealt. So these items can come off from next. Um, the next one is the email from Melanie Persons, which we've dealt with, and the letter from Ivan Collins, which we dealt, so these items can come off from next week. We had one application to build. Permit committee met.
Bless you.
And the uh, this is an application from Darryl Felton, one eighty Main Street North. And the recommendation of the permit committee, Mr. Chair, Chairman, uh, Craig Arnold.
Recommendation, our motion is to approve the application subject to dwelling tied into the town's main water sewer lines. On on Main Street North, and the minimum of fifty feet from the water mark.
Which is the regulation.
Which is the, which is our regulations.
So that's a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, well, councillor Kelly, uh, any discussion? We met some of us this afternoon, or this evening for that, so. Ready for the question? All in favor then? Everybody? Thank you. We're down to the town manager's report.
Okay, there's um, two pumps in with Zilem, now Zilem is the one who uh, who does all of our maintenance and repairs on our lift station pumps. There's two pumps currently in there, because there was issues with both, we had to ship both in. Uh, pump number one is the one that's located right at the end of town, uh, by Wilfs, we'll say, out that way. It's a two thousand three pump, so it's an older pump, it's almost twenty years old. To repair it is five thousand and change plus tax, to replace it is nine thousand and change plus tax. Um, I would suggest, and from talking to our contact at Zilem, as well as the public works, that given the age of that pump, we'd replace with new as opposed to repairing. So I wanted to, um, want to have permission to proceed with that and and get that done and and install again. So ninety-three hundred plus tax.
Move by councillor Kelly, seconded by councillor Arnold.
We use our gas tax money for that?
No, this, nothing has happened with this one yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on that one?
So we keep all pump ourselves, do we, or what?
Yeah, we usually keep those for parts and those types of things, right? Yeah, we got quite a stockpile of parts and pumps, yeah.
We do have money budgeted for pumps in our, in our budget, and we should be fine for that, because we haven't, we've been very fortunate so far.
Yeah.
Good.
Um.
The motions are made in second, all in favor? Everybody? Carry on.
Okay, and pump number two is uh, one of the pumps at Dr. Persons, the one on Riverside. Um, that's a two thousand sixteen pump, so that's relatively new. To repair that, we can do it for forty-eight, twenty-one plus tax, or to replace with new is almost twelve thousand in tax. Plus shipping, plus, we don't know how long the lead time's gonna take to get it, so again, the recommendation there, I would suggest, is to repair that one based on the fact it's only five years old.
Any recommendation moved by councillor deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Paul, further discussion? All in favor? Everybody? Good, thank you.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, it was discussed with regards to that large trailer that Buddy Watson and the other fellers had donated to the town. That we use for music fest and whatnot, as many of you know, it's always a, it's always a troubling issue trying to get that moved out onto the field, moved back, and there's issues. Because of course, it's in rough shape now, so even the tires and stuff, and and getting a a large truck to move is always a problem for us, so we had talked about perhaps positioning that. Out towards the um, outfield wall, and incorporating it into the wall, and having a drop-down stage where it could stay put. We can move the shed that's outside the chambers here, where it was meant to be, up by the wreck building, and they could utilize that, so it just gets rid of a whole bunch of problems, that we can do something with this large trailer. So we had talked about perhaps skirting it in around the base, as well as putting a front on it, like a facade, plywood facade. And you can keep it out there all year round, when the, when we want it for festivals or whatever the case is, the doors could open on it, same way it would now over the out. Out wall, the outfield fence. So I don't know what the um, what the appetite, we've talked about prices, so the boys, the boys had priced it up, you're looking at probably twenty-five hundred to three thousand. To skirt the entire bottom in and to put that wooden facade on the front. And to Jerry Righow, that that door would fall down and, you know, supports on it and whatnot, so you're looking at probably around three thousand dollars to do that project.
Sounds good.
Can you help me, you got the same thing in Elston?
I know that we go ahead and do that.
Councillor Kelly, seconded?
Second.
Okay, councillor Perry, all in favor? Everybody?
Okay, um, a couple of hours, I want to give an update on the boat launch fees and the stickers that was implemented just a short time ago, so as of today. By the time the office closed, we've sold thirty, uh, thirty passes, which is fifteen hundred dollars, which is, which is good, so. And the general feedback has been positive, and people have been saying, you know, if, I don't mind paying this, if it's gonna, if it's gonna go to the upkeep and and having that. Uh, kept up well and maintained, so that's been going really well, um, so that's that, I don't know if anybody had a question or questions on that?
Just that we'd, we'd had discussed, I think, there's been some concerns about.
Those are ordered.
There are some concerns about, and I'm particularly South Shore one, that a little bit of work needs to be done there.
Right.
So probably we need to have that discussion and see if there's anything that needs to be done before the.
And there was money budgeted for that as well, in the last one, yeah.
Have we done the class A's that we intended to do?
No, now there's been some, they've tidied up the parking lots a bit, but the class A hasn't been, it's not complete down there yet, no.
No, have all been graded.
Yeah. Okay, um, next, public meetings, many towns now have brought back public meetings. As opposed to what we're doing here now using technology, so I would propose that perhaps in the, come the next meeting, we could open it up. What many towns are doing, you pre-register, so you have an idea of the numbers that are gonna show up for a couple of reasons, so you have contact tracing, but also. If you're gonna have two people show up, we could have it here, if you're gonna have ten people show up, we could have it at the fire hall. Um, but it would allow us to plan ahead and set up the seats, and we would take care of that from this office here, and, you know, we could, we probably have to send out a flyer. To everyone in town, just notifying how how things are gonna run, and if you do wish to attend the council meeting, you'd have to pre-register by a certain day, maybe a couple of days prior to. But I'd like to be able to get back into that again, I think, I've heard from a number of residents who wish to be able to come in, and whether it's a dress councillor or just sit in on a meeting. So if we're able to do that while maintaining distance and doing all that, I think it'd be a great idea.
Is the fire hall available for seven thirty Wednesday?
That, that'll be the only thing, it's logistics around that, we'll have to figure out as well, but I'd like permission to at least check it out, and if if it can work, we could, we could certainly do it.
I think he's done by seven thirty.
He's done by seven thirty.
When the eight years have been on council, they've remade lineups for crowds to come in.
Well, there have been times.
One good by.
Too many cheers yet. There have been times where there was a few people around them.
I've seen sixteen and seventeen there, up all from the arena out there.
Yeah, we've been here for, I haven't near, I haven't near as long as some of you, but I've seen a few people.
How many times in thirty years?
Anyway, uh, consensus that the town manager would would look into that, right?
Okay, and finally, over the years, we've um, the wreck workers. Have used trailers, either what the staff themselves have owned, uh, or they borrow, or whatever the case is, utility trailers for. And they use them on a daily basis, whether it's carrying the the ride-on lawnmower, or it's getting sod, or whatever the case is. Uh, they've always used, like I said, borrowed, or whatever the case is, um, things have changed up there, of course, we have new staff up there, and that. Trailer that was once available is no longer available, and nor should we be using staff's equipment, it should be the town's equipment, so. Uh, I was looking at buying a five and a half foot by ten foot utility trailer, something that we could use, like I said, for the ride-on lawnmower and various other things. Um, they're very.
One for sale on Facebook, definitely.
Oh, is it?
During term.
I saw it, yeah.
Three thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's right.
So what I, what I was looking at was, like, the sort from Canadian Tire, but it's impossible to get those, you're looking at fifteen hundred bucks, probably with tax in on those. Um, however, we can get them in Gander, there's a spot in Gander that has them, it's a heavy-duty galvanized trailer, it's it's twice the trailer as what you get in Canadian Tire. You're looking at thirty-eight hundred dollars taxes in, so wondering if you wanna go that route, or I can look for used, I'm not sure. With the town buying used, how that works, because generally we only get prices, it makes a little bit, especially when you're buying off someone in a small town, but I'm open to any idea. The main, my main reason raising this is that we we desperately need a utility trailer.
How much you thinking it's gonna cost?
Well, the one that I had found in Gander, and again, they're pretty scarce, there's not many around, uh, thirty-eight hundred, taxes in, thirty-eight fifty-eight, actually, taxes in.
Single axle.
Yep, and that's a five and a half foot by ten galvanized, heavy-duty trailer, not the rinky-dinky ones you, you see for much less.
Well, you you there for, up in Kindon Park?
No, well, that too, but, yeah.
On the lawns.
So the ride-on lawnmower, for example, Carl House's lawn here, that was, well, our lawn now, uh, that we mowed. We need to get the ride-on lawnmower from the wreck shed to here, and the only way to do it without a utility trailer is have one of our workers drive it up the road, which is somewhat ridiculous as a. The thing. So, that's just one of the reasons.
We're spending. So moved, councillor Perry, councillor Arnold, any discussion further? So, again, the the amount is is as you suggested, I guess, but somewhere in that range, I guess.
We get a couple of other calls if we can.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, I've found other more expensive ones, that's why I mentioned this one, the thirty-eight hundred, there's others for, over four thousand.
Actually, I've been looking for one myself.
Yeah.
And I was told, be careful, if you buy one that's too big.
Mm-hmm.
It's licensed commercially type thing, and you have to get inspected every year. Like a regular truck, you just get your sticker on by the parent, after you get a certain size.
Right.
It gotta be licensed commercially every year, so then you gotta get inspected every year.
Right, now this one here, this particular one that I priced, uh, the thirty-eight hundred was from Yamaha, so I I'm doubtful that would require any, yeah. And the others from Adventure were a little bit more expensive again, but all recreation type, yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion is made in second, any further discussion? All in favor then? Everybody? Councillor Paul?
Oh, yes, of course.
Yep, any else, sir?
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, one more.
Reminded, um, so back to the earlier thing you had mentioned about the zone change request for Tower Equestrian. Um, we need to uh, have a motion to adopt the following, to adopt amendment number ten to the Glovertown Municipal Plan. And amendment number eleven to the Glovertown Development Regulations in lieu of a public hearing. To set three P M, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as a deadline for receipt of written objections and other representations to be considered by the commissioner. So just as a way of a backgrounder, amendment number eleven to the Glovertown Development Regulations is enacted. To comply with amendment number ten to the Glovertown Municipal Plan, the purpose is to add agricultural tourism as a discretionary use class. In the rural resource and agricultural zones, and again, this is to do with the the requests that came in from Tower Equestrian some time ago.
So, we need a motion by councillor Kelly, seconded by councillor Arnold, any discussion? So this is what we've been dealing with for some time, it's not new for most of us, so.
Part of the process.
It's part of the process, yeah. All in favor? Everybody, thank you. So we're on the table then, councillor Paul?
We had a couple of things, and one's been dealt with already, and the other one was, um, we had a, I don't know, maybe three hundred loads of fill. Coming from the contractor, which we dumped in our backyard of mountain, and. And some time ago, we decided to, on the split property, the town would acquire the split, split property and beyond the berm, on the, on the south side of the berm. We would uh, take that for to expand the depot land, yes. So I was wondering why we stopped all that fill and could have used it right there to make a bigger laydown area for our. For our yard, and now if we decide to go there, we gotta pack it off in the back, up to the front again, so I called town manager, and he said. He couldn't make that decision, that he'd go to council, so I'm going to council and just wondering what can we do about it, because we have lots of fill there that we'll never use in our way, though.
So, yeah, so a couple of things, we were completely out of fill, if you will, uh, last couple of things, like the school road lift station. Uh, exhausted quite a bit of it, as well as some other, some other things, so we're happy to see the fill come in, that's from the excavation job from the paving. The part that councillor Paul's talking about, as he had said, is right opposite the berm, right opposite the land that we're gonna be trying to sell. Uh, we have Scott Murphy, our surveyor, surveying that up, um, so I don't know if. It hasn't been raised by public works employees, nor have I seen it as an issue that I wanted to address, so if council wants to make that the laydown area, that's gonna be opposite the land that we're trying to sell. For residents in in the future, because all of a sudden, you're gonna be taking things from the back where they keep things, and you're gonna be moving it right up to the front. It's never been raised, I have no issue with it, but.
What are we gonna use it for? If we don't use it for a laydown area, for to expand the yard. Right now is nice, or the guy, the guy next door living here, so he looks at a big hole if he wanted to come inside his patio.
Well, he can't see over that berm, he wouldn't see a hole in that.
Yeah, but the berm is is halfway back. If you really look at this, you have to raise this bit of the sand, they could have, they could have dumped some fill in there and leveled that, and I sort of.
That was never, that was never part of discussion of where we're gonna use the fill, I mean, there's a hundred places probably around town we could have said we put the fill, right now, they want it. The contractor was doing this, I'm I'm taking over your job, but, so you explain, please.
We, we said we'd get rid of the fill and we take it, right?
So right now, the only thing that we had to satisfy is, those people doing the job, the contractors, had to find a place to dump the fill, within a two kilometer radius.
Yes.
Of the jobs they were doing, so outside of Harris Road, all of it was to be brought to the depot.
Yes.
Those, that fill was brought to the depot and dumped, that was it, there was no spreading of it, nothing else, it was just a laydown area, which we chose in the back, which is the most roomy and outside of.
I saw that, I saw that.
That's all that's been done at this point, if we now want to take our public works and move that fill to do some work around the yard, it's absolutely fine, however. The only person I've had a request from is councillor Paul, it hasn't come up any time other, so I'm open to it, but it hasn't been raised as an either.
What I'm saying is that it's a bit late now, because the fill is already in there, so it just couldn't have, we got to pack it all the way from the yard up here. When the truck was gonna dump it in the beginning, and they would even spread it for us, probably, because they want to.
You didn't hear what you just said, did you?
I did. Or they were.
They were going to dump it, that's all, they weren't gonna spread it, right, this is a, this is a get rid of as quick as they possibly can. Okay, but why don't we get the public, have a conversation, you have a conversation with the public works, discuss with them about councillor Paul's suggestion, and we'll go from there.
But again, just, just again, because I think this is one of the issue, again, it hasn't come up before, but more I think about it, so we're looking at selling that piece of land. And there's a berm here, so councillor.
Need to run there.
Oh, I know, but, so now you're suggesting we have this as our laydown area opposite the berm?
Well, yeah, yeah, because we, right now, we got all our smoke clearing equipment is all right here, we could, if we had just filled in, all our smoke clearing equipment could be all put over here out the way. And you got all this area for your laydown area, right now is a, is a bit of a jungle, check it out and see.
Yeah, anyway, have a look.
Have a conversation.
Have a conversation, see, and now make sure that anything is there, because there's a fence there too, that bars off some of that area, that makes it a little more convenient, right?
There's no fence near this area, I'll, I'll see what.
Not there.
No, just dump the fill and spread it out, you got a nice area.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. What do I know?
Well, any else, councillor Paul?
That's fine for me, it's good.
Councillor Perry?
At our last council meeting, uh, deputy mayor Saunders was in despair. Over the plight of his Montreal Canadiens. So I thought I might bring him up and ask him how he feels now.
He laid it.
Could have some, some literally to dance here.
Anyway.
Thank you, sir, councillor Kelly?
Oh, I got that, because I worked a day in yesterday.
Councillor Arnold?
Nothing.
Deputy mayor?
Expansing to our town hall there.
Yep.
What's the story?
It's, the tenders are out now, they close June fourteenth, but there's gonna be an extension based on some changes made today, probably in three or four days, but. It's in the process, people now are putting together prices, it's it's out publicly.
Price of blow, you probably see.
Yeah, that's around here, yeah.
Complaints about turnarounds in the paved roads, paved streets, Memorial Street more especially down there. The road can't go any further unless you expand and open the water there, right?
Yeah.
But, oh, try to turn around there, check, you can't get clear of paddle, dum, bang, 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 all around there.
And I'll refer to the table, is there any reason why that wasn't paved when the road was paved? Because generally, it is if the road can continue, the turnarounds aren't paved, but obviously, like you said, there's nowhere else to go, so.
I suspect it was a means to save a few dollars.
Yeah.
You know.
Years ago episode.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't, wasn't a lot of money in the budget.
Didn't pay any more turnaround?
It was the end of the road. That's the end of the road, yeah.
He just did it over there, went up by the seventy minute church, and there's no turnaround page there.
It's not the end of the road.
The road can continue, there's, there's land up beyond that, probably the old lane.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so uh, town manager will look into seeing where we are.
It's a solution just to have it greatly, is that some kind of.
Yes, yeah.
I got, I got it written in margin, it's, yeah.
Okay, so we'll look after that, sir, or look into it anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Eric.
Thank you, any else, uh, nothing from anybody else, I have nothing, so we'll move then to, um, correspondence. And the first letter is uh, from Bonnie Perry, and again, it's in relation to a discussion, I guess, we had some time ago. Uh, the problems with her water and sewer system, town manager, do you want to run by it?
Yeah, it's just something we dealt with some time ago, um, generally, anything inside a curb stop, the town isn't responsible for. But this was a bit of an extended waiting circumstance, um, it had been a leak there for some time, as I understand it. And there was quite a bit of sediment in the line that actually had done some damage to the valve, is what we had heard from the um, the plumber. So, based on what was submitted and the circumstances around it, council, um, I guess, was looking to meet halfway, or whatever the case is. Take on some of that responsibility based on circumstances, and offered Mrs. Perry four hundred dollars to cover some of the things that she had to replace. And the hiring of a plumber, since that time, I've gone back to Mrs. Perry and and told her what the council's decision was. Um, she wanted some time to think about it and speak to her plumber, and uh, she did get back to us, and this is a result of that, so. She's requesting, she wasn't, she wasn't pleased as such with the four hundred dollars, and is now requesting seven hundred and thirty. Based on the, the expenditure she had there, the hiring of a plumber, uh, kitchen facets, um. There's some cleaning in there of silt and mud from the front door, bathroom facet up. there's some painting in there of silt and mud from the front door, bathroom facet upstairs, those types of things. So but this is, it's a bit of an odd one, because again, generally, we don't look at anything inside a curb stop, but because of the circumstances, we did take on some of that liability. So I don't know if council wishes to go any further than they already have or not, but that's what she's requesting.
And there's, there's also a mention there of sods and so on.
Which, which will be done, yeah.
That's, that's to be done as well, is that?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's not so much of her issue, because I, I assured her sods, sods would be done this summer, so, yeah.
So she's asking for seven thirty-one, and we've approved already four hundred dollars. I guess my question to council is, do you want to go any higher than that, or are you satisfied with where we are?
I, I, I have, I have difficulty in, in, in repairing or replacing facets. I have difficulty with that because, uh, what, what's going to happen to our people when, uh, you have a water break Main Street South, and when they turn the water back on, there are places where facets get all plugged up, and if you're not able to do it yourself, then you have to call in a plumber to do it. And it's generally, it's the responsibility of the, of the homeowner. These things happen.
We offered over half of the cost. We offered it four hundred dollars. I thought it was, I thought it was reasonable. I know when you have a break anywhere, I know we had a breakdown, what are their names, everything, everything, everyone in my, plugged up.
I've had mine plugged up several times.
They had to take it out, off and clean it, and they got the reducer valve and clean it. My, I didn't know it was a reducer, reducer valve there, you had to get ready to make it up. So we're, we're ready to.
Anybody else have a comment? Do we have a motion?
I know that we, uh.
I guess we've already had the motion, don't we?
The motion, I don't.
We don't need a motion.
Unless you're going to change your decision, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, good point. So we're, we're, if we don't have any motion to change, we'll assume that we're going to leave it as it is at the four hundred dollars then. So I guess everybody comfortable with that? Is that a consensus? Everybody's okay? Great, thank you then. We will move to the second. I guess everybody's.
Council's position remains the same.
Remains the same. The next item is a letter from Shannon Stubbs, MP of Lakeland. This is a request dealing with gun control. Uh, some municipalities have already opposed Bill C twenty-one and have taken the steps to pass resolutions in opposition to this potential new power that they neither requested or, uh, it, res- resources, sorry, composing, of course. So this is in relation to, uh, provincial jurisdictions and all that kind of stuff. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add to that? Do we?
Not really. We often see these letters come out from MPs from across councils. This is someone from Alberta that has an issue with this bill, potential bill regarding guns and whatnot. I, I don't see any role for us to play in it, but.
Does anybody have any issues with, uh, with the raise in that?
I know, Debbie Fowler.
Okay, thank you. The next item is from, uh, Josh Perry. Josh is looking for a meeting with council regarding his access to his land from Baby Heights. Again, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, so this is one we looked at some time ago, and actually, we just discussed it there. I think you read something into the record earlier tonight. So Mr. Perry was looking at accessing the Brookside extension, if you will, the part opposite, the part that Mr. Ginge had developed. There's, uh, another portion that goes in towards the, the pond, we'll say.
Dewey Dam there, yeah.
Right, that runs parallel with, uh, Baby Heights. So Mr. Perry is looking instead of accessing from Brookside, as we had suggested. I believe now, I'm not sure what the fate of that development is, so he's unable to get access that way. So now he wants to go back to his original request of accessing through the right of way from Baby Heights. Um, there were reasons we didn't grant it at the time, but, uh, some things have changed with regards to the development or the development that's not going to happen, and Mr. Perry would like to have an opportunity to, uh, to sit down with council and have that discussion.
As councils wish, I guess we could probably start with a, we start with a permit committee, do it. Is there any, uh, appetite that the permit committee talk to them?
If that's been a road that was used for all the guys on Baby Heights, they're all they wouldn't, they're going through for years and years and years, it's going to be pretty hard to take away from them, that's it.
That's the discussion we've had, yeah.
Just as, well, we wouldn't give it to them the last time.
That's what I'm saying. So we change that, right?
Just, just to clarify though, so the last conversation we had was him wanting to buy a piece, a portion of that right of way, which would have stopped the access. Now he's just looking to use the access to access his property. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't take away from anyone. However, would use it, and then the questions are, will, will he have to bring it up to a, a asphalt standard because it's coming off asphalt? The water and sewer, how would that work? You know, a bunch of different items. It's backlot development, so, um, but those are the things he wishes to discuss.
We at least should be giving the meeting.
Yes, let's have a conversation. Yeah, of course, okay. So a permit committee, uh, meeting, Mr. Arnold?
Sure.
Yes, enough.
All right, just have, have that conversation. Maybe bring a recommendation back to council.
Yes. Do you have any time in particular?
He's going away tomorrow for three weeks. I've started to be there.
So he's not going to be around for a while.
He's gone for three weeks after.
So maybe the town manager can make contact and we'll see then.
Yeah.
We'll make, we'll see what's on.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, a letter from the Central Northeast Health Foundation. Uh, they're in the process, apparently, if we look at the second page, turn over, it's, uh, they're purchasing a bus.
Um, funds to this?
Yeah.
We gave them a hundred dollars in merch for this sphere of giving fundraiser.
Okay, so we've already donated?
Normally don't do more than a hundred dollars a year to those types of.
Okay. Uh, any desire to do anything other than that? If not, we'll, uh, we'll file that as well then. And we're down now to check register?
How about one, uh, Sally Wheeler?
There was one there.
Sally Wheeler, but it's.
Some other one.
Uh.
That was removed from the agenda because we didn't have all the information ready to bring to the meeting, so that will come back to the table again.
Perfect.
Next time, if, if necessary, we will come back to the table again. The Wheeler letter? Email, very last email in your.
So what's Sally Wheeler? Why are we going to defer it? Begin?
No, if it's necessary.
It shouldn't have come to the table. It was for the administrative staff to deal with. Matt Council?
Thank you for.
She's my rescue.
Motion to accept the check register, please.
So moved.
Counsel Arnold, Counsel Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Counsel Perry?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counsel Arnold, Counsel Perry, thank you, gentlemen? End.